McGee.
Ryan Allen.
McGivern.
Ryan Allen.
Murphy.
Ryan Allen.
Sullivan.
Ryan Allen.
Tomlin.
Ryan Allen.
Bacon.
Ryan Allen.
Anderson Burgos.
Ryan Allen.
Bertley.
Ryan Allen.
Grainey.
Ryan Allen.
Hernandez.
Ryan Allen.
Leahy.
Mr. Ryan Allen.
Ryan Allen voted on the first ballot unanimously.
With your vote, you approve Ryan Allen for a one-year term for January 2021. Congratulations. Next on the list is assessors, and it's one assessor.
Motion to go to the first ballot?
Second.
Motion is go to the first ballot. The current assessor is Anthony Delude. He has a three-year term which would expire January 2023. Clerk will call the roll. You state the name of the person.
LeBron Martinez.
Anthony Delude.
Lisi.
Anthony Delude.
McGee.
Anthony Delude.
McGivern.
Anthony Delude.
Murphy.
Anthony Delude.
Sullivan.
Anthony Delude.
Tomlin.
Anthony Delude.
Bacon.
Tony Delude.
Anderson Burgos.
Anthony Delude.
Bertley.
Tony Delude.
Grainey.
And Anthony Delude.
Hernandez.
Anthony Delude.
Leahy.
Mr. Tony Delude.
Anthony Delude appointed assessor on the first ballot unanimous.
With your vote, you approve Tony Delude for another three-year term. Next on the list is the Water Commissioner.
First ballot?
Second.
Going to the first ballot, and it was seconded. Current person is Bill Harbalis. Three-year term which would expire January 2023.
LeBron Martinez.
Mr. Bill Harbalis.
Lisi.
Bill Harbalis.
McGee.
Bill Harbalis.
McGivern.
Bill Harbalis.
Murphy.
Bill Harbalis.
Sullivan.
Bill Harbalis.
Tomlin.
Bill Harbalis.
Bacon.
Bill Harbalis.
Anderson Burgos.
Mr. Bill N. Harbalis.
Bertley.
Bill Harbalis.
Grainey.
Bill Harbalis.
Hernandez.
Bill Harbalis.
Leahy.
Mr. William Harbalis.
Bill Harbalis elected Water Commissioner on the first ballot unanimous.
With your vote, you approve Bill Harbalis for a three-year term. Last is the Whiting Street Fund, which is currently held by Patrick Lavelle.
Mr. President, I ask this every year. For the people at home, and maybe particularly for the new councilors as well, I know this is an important fund. This is a fund that many of us have used before as city councilors, but can you just give kind of a quick synopsis of what this fund is for?
Yeah, it's a, in essence, the Whiting Street Fund was from Mr. Whiting, and what they did is...
It's Mr. Street.
It's Whiting Street, I always say it wrong. Of which, they put monies aside. We have people on the fund in order to give out for those who are in need of assistance.
Well, to Mr. ...
Yeah.
Mr. Leahy's point, I don't recall ever receiving one item of correspondence in eight years from the Whiting Street Fund. I'm wondering if...
If you want to file an order, I'll sign on with it. Because I have utilized it for, like, a constituent, I think two, maybe, in twenty years.
Mr. Leahy, I will file an order. I will not make it a late file, but I will file it for the next meeting. I'll put your name on it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So you want an update of the account?
Yeah, I'll file it for next meeting, Todd, Mr. President.
Good to know.
You want an update of the account and minutes of meetings?
I don't think we have meetings.
No, it's just...
I think it's just it's a one-off.
Okay.
Question?
Yep.
What's the, could you explain the purpose of the account?
I can, if you want.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, so as councillor, as President McGee said, so years ago, the street, Mr. Street, very wealthy family, and they were very good to their neighbors and to the people of Hoyok. So they started this fund called the Whiting Street Fund. And so this fund is used, if you have a constituent that needs gas, electric be paid one month, water department to be paid one month. It's something that's not going to be recurring. It's just something that the person's working, but having a very difficult time. You can apply for it, and chances are pretty good your constituent will get it. It's just, it's kind of that just one-off thing that's going to either push that person, that family, into great despair, or it's going to help them through, you know, the holidays.
Thank you.
Counselor Lisi.
And I believe that people don't necessarily have to apply through the council to access those funds. They could access them directly through the...
To the treasurer.
Or the committee.
Mr. President?
Counselor McGivern, hold on.
Absolutely cannot apply through the council. We can certainly make recommendations, but we have no say over how the account is used. At the time when it was established, the city controlled what is now known as welfare, what the Irish called was the Ron the Dole. But what this account was for was people who didn't quite qualify for the welfare criteria, but at the same time, as Counselor Leahy pointed out, has some extenuating circumstances.
Counselor Bartley.
Would you, would the President just remind the council as to the incumbent's name, please? Just, would you remind us as to the incumbent's name?
It's Patrick Lavelle.
Patrick Lavelle, okay. Motion should go to the first ballot.
So motions go to the first ballot, of which it's a three-year term.
LeBron Martinez.
Patrick Lavelle.
Lisi.
Patrick Lavelle.
McGee.
Patrick Lavelle.
McGivern.
Patrick Lavelle.
Murphy.
Patrick Lavelle.
Sullivan.
Patrick Lavelle.
Tomlin.
Patrick Lavelle.
Bacon.
Patrick Lavelle.
Anderson Burgos.
Patrick Lavelle.
Bertley.
Patrick Lavelle.
Grainey.
Patrick Lavelle.
Hernandez.
Patrick Lavelle.
Leahy.
Mr. Patrick Lavelle.
Patrick Lavelle appointed to the Whiting Street Fund on the first ballot unanimously.
Of which will be a three-year term, expires January 2023. Before we go on, I did have a request by a councillor. I'll turn it over to councillor Anderson Burgos.
So I wanted to take this time to address the body and the community, anybody who's watching tonight. For those who don't know, my mother had passed away December 17th, and it was very, very hard for myself and my family. And the amount of love and support that I got, not only from this body, but from the community, I want to thank you all so much from the bottom of my heart. My family and I are so grateful to be part of this community, part of the city, that loves so dearly, regardless of what party affiliation you are. At the end of the day, that drops, and you guys came together and were so supportive, and we can never thank you enough. I, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much. We love you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three is from the order with regards to the Christmas tree refund.
Motion to receive.
Copy to Finance.
Motion is received, or for a copy to Finance. All those in favor?
I have a question on that. Some time ago, I think it might have been you or me, or both of us, we filed an order to have a list of that debit card and all the background, all the months prior to that use, to be sent to us. Do you know anything about that? Has that happened yet?
The treasurer is still yet to comply with the order and the request by both you and I.
Can we have Ryan look into that tomorrow?
Yep.
Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
If I may, I just want to thank Tanya, and I also want to thank the legal department for actually pursuing the reimbursement on that. It was a mistaken purchase, but it looked like there was a lot of perseverance to get the refund over a two-year period, so I thought that was pretty amazing. So, thanks to them.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just through the chair, through the Finance Chair. I just, when it goes to as a copy, will that be taken, will that be taken up in committee? So we can have a, just an ever-so-brief discussion with the treasurer, particularly in regards to the issue with the credit card. I think it's kind of about time we kind of hear what's going on with it.
Yeah, to that, normally it should be receive and refer to the committee so it can be taken up to bring them in. If it's just a copy, you're just having a copy within there.
Then I'll make a friendly amendment, if I may, to receive and refer. I'll make a motion, receive and refer this to Finance.
You can do it, as well as, please understand that Counselor Leahy and I have filed an order in the past to have a complete breakdown of that credit card, however you want to call it. We have yet to receive that.
Debit card.
Debit card.
Just a gentle reminder, that's all it is.
All right, so motion is to reconsider. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is to take item three and refer to Finance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Isn't that what we just did?
We referred to copy.
We gave a copy.
Just a copy.
I had said refer, but then it was cop, changed to copy.
Number four is Fire Commission, minutes of the meeting.
Motion to receive.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
President's report, I'll be quick. First, that's why I was a little laid out here. I was trying to gather up the troops, but Counselor Sullivan kind of threw us off. He went out and bought a Keurig. So we have a brand-new coffee maker in the back with a lot of different options that are there. So thank you, Counselor Sullivan, for doing that for this body. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
The Flower Fund. Counselor McGivern, as I mentioned yesterday, has been very gracious in handling the Flower Fund, which is, in essence, we contribute to it each month our paycheck, a certain amount, and it goes into this fund in order to take care of things that come up. Youth, sports, we want to all, you know, donate to it and help out and place an ad. Unfortunately, someone passes away, we send flowers on behalf of the full city council. So if you sign up for the Flower Fund, it's just that money building up so that we can then account for those things. Counselor McGivern has taken the lead to, in essence, cut the check and do all the legwork to get those things done, and he did the accounting of everything. He really didn't have a choice, we just made him do it. So we thank Joe for doing that tonight. Some people will receive a check from it because it's the end of the two-year term. We send some money out back to you, and then we leave some in the account to carry over for the new two-year term. So with that, Counselor McGivern, if you have any...
Two years ago, when the President made that same speech, it was himself, my name on the check and our city clerk's name on the check, and we're all not responsible, but we're all the leg people who do this work. Yesterday, I could not, you know, speak when the President was making a speech and putting it all on my shoulders, but I guess I've been volunteered for all of it, and I graciously accept that. But our city clerk is the one who did all the work for the end-of-the-year get-together, and I think she should be credited for that, not the Flower Fund.
We thank you both.
Thank you both, yeah.
Thank you.
And you can always step away from that, but you can't really, so thank you.
Decisions are made by, decisions are made by group. There's ongoing things we do every year, but anybody has an idea, it will pass the test of the entire group if necessary.
Counselor Bartley, have some?
I was going off-topic, but I was just going to say, I think the city clerk also should be committed for putting together the whole thing-majig yesterday, true?
Yeah, her and...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Devin Sheehan for a great job. Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, I was just going to kind of echo what David, Counselor Bartley, said. Bryna did a fantastic job, and I know Devin helped her as well. And that's not, obviously, an easy thing to do, because, for a very poor analogy, it's kind of like herding a lot of cats and trying to make sure the cats are doing the right thing. It's just not an easy topic. So Bryna, I take my hat off to you, and Devin, at home, I'm sure he's watching this as well. So just wanted to thank you guys both as well.
Counselor Lisi.
No, it was just that I think Bill was trying to figure out if he was all set.
Oh, Bill, you're all set.
Yeah, it's time for you to leave. You can go.
Hold on, wait, motions, spend the rules, allow Ms. Lavelle to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
A bit of time.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your support tonight. It means the world to me. And now I'm going to go have a tombs.
Happy New Year.
Have a good night, sir.
Good night, Bill. Counselor LaVar Martinez.
And another note, I just want to say thank you for the service and the management of this fund. At the same time, I just want to say I was late because I was trying to catch up with families in Puerto Rico, as you all know. For us to take a moment, at least, of silence, because there is people who are very freak, you know, scared about the situation. So my family spread out throughout the island, so I was trying to catch up with some. I have not gotten in touch with some of them, but I think this is something for us to get ready, the same situation we kind of faced two years ago with Maria, Yoriki Maria. So just so that you know, there may be that influx again coming out here due to this situation happening there, so.
Take a moment for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, a couple more updates. Yesterday, the mayor asked Counselor Lisi, myself, school committee member Devin Sheehan, to come in to the office to speak with him, as well as Doctors Reich. The update with regards to the schools, as we know, it was not passed for an override. Doctors Reich has gone down to the MSBA to figure out what options are available. Do we get back in the pipeline quicker? Do we have to start the whole process over? Of which, it was a little tricky in a sense of, they want to know if we have any capacity to fund a school, or are we still going with two schools? What is our capacity in order to fund a project, of which, then they can tell us what project they will approve. It's a little weird, the meeting was a little... We asked a lot of questions, that's why I can say, and what we're now waiting for is the mayor will communicate with the MSBA to see what we can and cannot do, and then hopefully get an answer back. I know Cinder from Bond Council is going to be called in in order to try and see what options may be available if we try bonding. There is no set plan that I can tell you about. It's just them trying to see what the MSBA will or will not allow. They did say, you know, we're going to keep you on a fast track, which then, as Doctors Reich said, we're not really sure what that means. They're not defining it. So he's trying to get us the information as best as possible, but we're still waiting for them to actually define things. Counselor Lisi, if you want to add to that, or...
No.
Okay. So I just wanted to give you that update, and I think that's all I have for now. Anything else, anything I may have missed for the group, or anything you want to announce of events coming up? Nope, okay. Reports of committee? There was no ordinance committee. There was a Finance Committee meeting on December 30th, of which this one was taken up, which is 6A. Finance order that there hereby appropriated $13,310 from mechanic to motoring vehicles. Motion be received, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern?
The Finance Committee did meet anticipating a number of issues that would become before the committee this coming January to try to keep up with some things that were in committee. This item came in on December 17th, and the item is quite simple. The mechanic's position was not filled for a period of time, and the, what the police department did was contract out some of their repairs and stuff. So the money being transferred, $13,310, goes from an unfilled position into a line item that would allow the police department, allow the police department to contract out the repairs of motor vehicles. The position has since then been filled, and the mechanic, I believe, is now on board at the DPW.
Okay.
Committee recommends adoption of the transfer.
Counselor Murphy.
Just a question, so do you know, I assume the salary for the new hire is what was in the budget originally? Do you know?
The, we were told that there's enough money to cover the rest of the fiscal year. We always ask that. I'm sorry, if that's your question?
Yeah, I mean, is this the first transfer we've had? I thought we had done one previously to this, but I could be wrong.
I think we did.
There's been a number of transfers similar to this. I think this is the first one, because the position was filled at the beginning of the year. It was during the year that it became vacant. But I think this is the first one for this particular individual, particular position.
Okay.
I can check, but I'm pretty sure it is.
And just one other question. I mean, the previous person that was there...
Yep.
They had just been hired not that long ago, correct?
I believe so, Counselor Murphy, but yes, I believe so.
I mean, my, and my question eventually comes out to, I mean, looking at the salary, if you're talking about a very good mechanic and you're talking about saving money, I mean, we're paying pretty forty-something thousand, I think, is what the salary is. So my gut is, we're going to get people in that are going to be a good mechanic, and they're not going to stay long, and we're going to end up paying money in excess of that. So it's just something I think we need to consider as we go along, or the mayor needs to consider as we go along. If we want to get a good mechanic to handle the police vehicles, we may need to raise that salary.
I think that, I think it's an excellent point, and I'd liken it to, if you watch Channel 22 News and you watch your favorite weather person, how many weather persons have we seen come and go in the last seven years? Because the local market doesn't pay that person what the bigger market can pay them. So we become, and just like Channel 22, a training ground. And eventually, you know, there's a bigger market or a place where, you know, our people who we train, and we lost a number of department heads to Springfield and other areas, because they can make more money for the same work, and, but we do the training.
So motion, Counselor Tomlin?
What's that?
Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
LeBron Martinez.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bertley.
Yes.
Grainey.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes.
Unanimous vote of the body.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. 6B, the Committee on Finance has referred an order in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 4A. The city council authorized the mayor to execute a contract to deliver recyclers to Springfield Recycling Facility. The dual system contract will be for a five-year term.
I think a motion that we adopt the committee report that we allow the mayor to enter into a five-year term with the MRF.
Second.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and grant that the mayor can enter into a five-year term. It requires us to vote for that, to allow for contracts over, I think, three-year period. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. About a month ago, the DPW superintendent gave me a call and asked me to file this order and explained to me what was going on with the recycling industry. It was quite an eye-opener, and I think it's an eye-opener to all of us, not just in the city of Hoyok, but throughout the country as to what has happened over recent, very recent times. Most of the plastic recycling, or actually, all of the plastic recyclables were going to China, and it was a lucrative industry so that when the recycling was said and done, the communities could actually make some money on doing the recycling. Now, we all know we recycle for more than one reason. One, and probably the most important, because it's the correct thing to do for the environment. Two, we recycle because it would save a certain amount of waste going into our tipping fee for our landfills. And three, we recycle because it's the law. Not only is it a city ordinance, but there's actually a state statute that says solid waste has to be handled this way. And if we don't recycle, the state can actually fine communities and/or reject certain trash streams that would be going into landfills. So I filed the order. We've all, I think everyone's received a copy. I asked Ryan to make sure that everybody had a copy of the actual contract, although we're not voting on the contract, we're voting on five years. But in fairness, we should know what's in the contract, and the superintendent agreed with me that it's because it's the, it's the length of the contract and the financial obligations that are part of why we vote on anything. This is a mayoral-negotiated-only type of item, but because he can only, any mayor can only negotiate up to three years, we have to approve the five years. So some of the highlights in some of what is going on is found in, both in the contract and the two-page handout that was given to the Finance Committee last week. Right now, the, this is a standard-language contract that is being, throughout the Commonwealth, they're estimating seventy communities are going to take advantage of this contract by, if you take advantage of it, it has to be voted on before January 31st. They're going to take advantage of the contract, because we are dual-stream, and that's what the MRF wants us to, I'm sorry, we're...
We are dual.
Dual, what?
We are dual.
We are dual, sorry. And the dual stream being that we separate, you know, before we send it down there. And the whole idea is, we will be, instead of receiving money back, we're going to be charged a tipping fee. The first year of the contract is $93.50. It goes up moderately over the first, over the five years of the contract itself. Now, there's a couple of good things and a couple of bad things that are within this negotiated contract. One of the, one of the good things is that there's still some profit to be made, which is more in the paper area, recycling. And any money that comes in, any revenue-sharing money that comes in, will reduce to tipping fee. Unfortunately, we're used to not a tipping fee, but any money that came in would go above what we would do to pay for tonnage, actually pay for what we're doing in terms of recyclable goods, and then make a slight profit to the community, as most municipalities and the Commonwealth would do too. One of the things we do have to watch out for, we're in the gray area, but not a poor area, is a contamination fee. There are certain things that cannot go into the waste stream itself, and certainly there are certain things that cannot go in the waste stream and end up at the recycling plant or separation distribution center itself. And if, that is judged by both, by tonnage and by percentage. And if we go over a certain percentage of contamination, there's a, there are penalties that could be paid. And it's something that we do a fairly good job at, but Michael told us that that's, it's an ongoing issue that the DPW works with, with the pickup and watching. I think if anybody's here has ever had a complaint or got a ticket on one of your recycling bins or one of your barrels, I think you know what I'm talking about, that we send people out to make sure people are abiding by the rules of trash pickup and abiding by the rules of recycling itself. And he told me that that, they will be as diligent as they possibly can on that in the future to avoid anything. One of the things that shocked me is that they will no longer be accepting shredded paper. You know, from this building and the building I work in next door, shredding paper is very important, you know, because of important personal information that's on, on the paper, sensitive information, you know, and I just, I didn't, I was kind of shocked at that, but I guess at the moment, that, but I guess at the moment, the machines have a problem with shredded paper, so they won't be accepting it. Good, good news with the contract is, even though it's five years, the contract itself can be terminated at any time. There's speculation now with China out of the game, a number of countr, number of industries within the country itself will probably be looking at doing their own type of recycling and accepting goods and make, make for the opportunity for a better, a better deal. So at any given time, the city can back out, any city can back out of this contract if they can get into something that makes more sense in terms of disposing of our recyclable materials. Worst-case scenario, five years would be, the budget, total budget item would be a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That would be from that ninety-three point fifty cent tonnage tipping fee itself. The question came up about, well, if our tipping fee is cheaper for, for solid waste, why recycle? And I think I've already given you the answer is, not only is it a local ordinance, it's a state statute that you have to recycle, again, you know, for good reasons, but at the same time, the state could refuse the, the acceptance of our solid waste into landfills if we put our, I guess someone up in New Hampshire is trying this, and they're finding out very quickly that even New Hampshire is, you know, not going to allow it, and they can also fine a community if they don't do the recycling and put the recyclable goods, allow the recyclable goods to stay within the solid waste stream itself. So the time sensitivity of this is, this particular language is good until January thirty-first. The mayor is looking for permission to enter into the agreement. Again, just to repeat myself, the agreement is pretty standard language. We're not voting on the language itself because we don't negotiate this contract, but we certainly can say, have our say as far as whether we should allow the mayor to do five years. MRF will not accept anything less than five years. Committee's recommendation is that we adopt the motion to allow the mayor to enter into a five-year agreement.
Second.
All right. Counselor Leahy, then Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, I'll be much briefer. So the history goes, China, two thousand, they had this manufacturing bo... You okay? Okay. Just wasn't sure if you were calling Domino's or not, I was going to order a pizza. What'd you have to say? Oh, good, okay. All right, that's weird. Okay, anyway, so two thousand, China, as you guys all know, had a manufacturing boom, and they were taking all the recyclables they can because they're making profits off it. However, two thousand seventeen, they had an act come out in China saying that no longer are we going to be accepting pizza boxes because they have, you know, grease on it. No longer will we be taking plastic bags, no longer will we be taking light bulbs, no longer will we be taking cardboard, no longer will we be taking, as Joe said, shredded paper. They stopped taking a lot of different things, and so that, that caused many different areas of the world some issues, especially the United States of America. Back in the early two thousands, city of Hoyoke was making roughly about seventy thousand dollars a year, so I remember just pushing recycling all the time, not only because it's the right thing to do, because we were making, we, the city was making money on it too. And so we're going to go from the city making seventy thousand dollars a year to about spending a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year with the tipping fee about ninety-three dollars and fifty cents, with a, you know, escalator of about a point and a half going up every year. You know, that wasn't said, I read the article in the newspaper, I'm not sure if you guys did, but it looked more like a press release than anything. That didn't really go over what our meeting had, the depth of our meeting. Our depth of the meeting was Michael McMaz came in here and said, you know, we are going to have to pay this, we don't have a choice. As Joe said, it's, it's not only a statute, it's the law, and of course, recycling is the right thing to do. But Joe was shocked about the shredded paper. I, I was shocked about the pizza boxes. I never knew that you couldn't recycle a pizza box. Just very interesting to me, but we have to pay this, we have, we have to do something with our, with our recyclables. No one's, excuse me, no one's going to lose their job, our recycle trucks are still going out, they're still going to be doing the good job they are, and so this is something we have to do. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yep, thank you. One other important point, and I don't think we hit it, Joe, is we can exit this agreement at any time during the course of the five years, so we're not bound to it for the, for the full term. If there's some change or some other avenues present themselves to the city, we can, we can certainly exit it. And also, I think everybody should be aware, the hundred and sixty-five thousand is, as Joseph suggested here, is a, is a worst-case scenario number. One of the, and I think that's a very high number. I think one of the things I know for fact is a lot of commercial businesses in the city were allowed, the city would pick up their recyclables for them at no charge, even though they had commercial contracts with other people to haul away their normal, everyday trash. That wasn't being done by the city. So that was quite a bit of tonnage also, that will drop away from this number. It will go back on the local businesses now to dispose of that along with their regular commercial flow of materials that the city wasn't picking up. There's really no way to put a exact tonnage on that number. We'll, we'll see as they get off that stream because the city will no longer pick that stuff up for, for them, so.
Counselor Green.
Yeah, well, this was one of the questions I had to reiterate what Counselor Sullivan said. The tonnage, I hope that we're going to have a check, checks and balances of how much tonnage that we're sending out so that we're not overcharged or, or anything like that. They also mentioned a designated hauler in here. I hope we're going to be, the designated hauler is going to be the city of Hoyoke to, to haul this trash. We got all these trash trucks and everything else, you know, rather than outsource it to some other company outside. And the third fact is, the worst-case scenario is actually two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars because it's the one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars that is going to cost us, plus the seventy-three thousand we're going to lose.
Counselor Leacy.
Thanks. I was just wondering, through the chair, to the Finance Committee Chair, if Mr. McManus said anything about like what the worst offender contaminants are, like what are the types of substances that end up in the trash stream that we get penalized for, just to do a little bit of a, you know, public education campaign. I'd be, I'd be curious if he had made any comments about that.
Pizza boxes.
Pizza boxes.
Obviously, one of the, the worst contaminants in any waste stream is hazardous material. And I think people should understand that there are certain, a lot of items that do not belong in your, in the solid waste or recyclable stream itself, and that's anything that's considered hazardous, which could be paint cans, aerosol cans, things of that nature, oil, things that, you know, have, you have to dispose of in a very important way. Medicines are hazardous. Any items that, you know, solid items, bulk items that we cannot put at curbside, but we can bring down to the DPW garage should not go into the stream, into the, the stream itself. But anything that's not recyclable, in terms of recycling, anything that's not recyclable is what this contract is talking about.
Thanks, and I have one more. It's more of a point, but I'd like to have this confirmed if possible. From what I understand, if we don't sign into this contract, then there's not enough communities in Western Massachusetts to participate in the dual-stream recycling, so we would all be folded into a single stream, and that would increase the tipping fee up to about five hundred thousand dollars. Is, is that correct? Did I, did I get that right?
It's not what Michael said.
I am not sure about the numbers, but in, conceptually, conceptually, that's the right word, that would be, you know, if we don't accept this contract, we're subject to a contract with not as lucrative or not as good as terms as this could be, or opportunity to be good. And I'm not too sure about a number, but it would be a much higher number than what we're facing.
Thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So just, I don't think I'm going to be terribly brief, but I'll, I'll cut it back as quick as I can. So I appreciate that, that the committee had a meeting on December thirtieth, it's just, it's a tough one to attend, but, you know, the, the job had to be done, but the, so the committee kept working, and I do appreciate that. As, I've been very critical of Mr. Fuquay over many of the things that he did before he left town, but one thing I never criticized him for, in fact, complimented him for, is to keep Hoyoke in a dual-stream recycling system, and I think that's borne fruit over the years because we've made money where, I know the town of Plymouth, for example, it just, they've been paying exorbitant fees, town of Framingham, exorbitant fees for many years, and so now Hoyoke is going to have to bear the brunt of what's happening in global markets, starting, I believe, July first, if I read that contract, if I read the contract right. One thing, one thing I didn't hear about, and, and I think people danced around it tonight, is what kind of education campaign is, is Mr. McManus going to put to, and a continuous public education campaign, because this is an important thing. Are, are they going to put things on the website? Are they going to update the website? Are they going to send out mailers? Are they going to send it with bills? Are they going to remind constituents? Are they going to put it on Channel fifteen? Did Mr. McManus mention any of it? I doubt he did. But that's got to be a constant reminder to constituents. So that's one point, is the education part. So, you know, we're playing guessing games about, you know, what's good and what's not. Well, I mean, Mr. McManus, DPW, so that's one thing. I, I heard the, the contract was negotiated, I strongly doubt it, Mr. President. It, it sounds like it's basically an adhesion contract, it says, "Take it or leave it, five years, or hit the road, guys." So there's nothing negotiated in here. It's a standard contract where there's, there was, you know, here you go, Hoyoke, this is what you got, deal with it. I'm glad to hear that, that there's a exit strategy in there. I didn't, I didn't see that language in there myself, but I, you know, I only read through it once, so I'm, I'm very happy, happy to, happy to hear that. The hundred and sixty-five thousand, to me, I, I think that's a best-case scenario, the way I read that contract, Mr. President. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a worst-case scenario, I think that's the best we're going to do. But what I didn't hear tonight, and what I hope to hear from either Mr. McManus or the mayor who, who negotiated this contract, is how are we budgeting for this, Mr. President? How are we budgeting for this going forward for the next five years on a worst-case scenario? In other words, a conservative, very conservative scenario, because that's not how budgets come out of Room One, at least the last three, and particularly this year, with a five-point-seven percent increase, and then we saw more increases on top of that with not the one, but two, but three supplemental budgets that we had before December seventeenth, and which you'll notice, the financial transfer orders, we've got many more of these, we already voted on no on, on these, on, back in June twenty-sixth, but they're back again. So, so we're, we're going to have to hear, Mr. President, about where the monies are coming for, to budget, and why I said, and Counselor President said, for eight years, let's take the money they were making from recycling and let's put it in a safe place. But you know what, Mr. President? Until the last two years, we never did, and went right back to the general fund. Now, I got it, I, I heard the arguments from advocates in this room, I, I heard, heard them. But now you know why I argue the way I argued. And beyond that, we saw the fruits of that this past year, because we were able to buy well over one hundred of those massive recycling bins. I know a lot of them got distributed to many of my constituents who are more than grateful, and you see the bins all, all over Lawler Street, or Martin Street, or Gate Street, or wherever. It's wonderful, because people are, you know, people are recycling, and they're passionate about it. But now we're going to have to use a little bit of coaching. So it's my hope, Mr. President, that we'll hear about education from Mr. McManus, and we'll hear about a budget from the mayor going forward, because this is, this is vital. I mean, I'm glad to know about pizza boxes and light bulbs and all that, that's cool, but, but we, we've got to get real about it, and we've got to get strategic about it. So, I mean, I know that's on your shoulders, Todd, but, you know, some of that is, and this is not rhetoric, I mean, this is, this is very real and it's very needed, so I'm hopeful that we'll get, and if necessary, I'll file an order, but I, I wouldn't think that would be necessary. I would hope we would just get regular communication on this point. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yeah, so I think education is, is key here. So I believe when you're recycling, that little symbol, the recycle symbol, there's, I believe, one through seven. One and four, if I'm not mistaken, are the best ones to recycle. The boxes, there's a reason why some boxes cannot be recycled, and it's because of the shiny film. That shiny film cannot be recycled. So what we need to do is our due diligence and really educate the public on what to recycle, what not to recycle, what can we avoid, so that the, you know, the, the, the amount that it's going to cost the city would be not as great. That's all I have to say.
Anyone further? Counselor McGivern.
Just on Counselor Bartley's points, on education, I agree. It's an ongoing process, I agree, it needs to be picked up. Education is, and I think every property owner receives the, the rules on an annual basis along with a calendar as to when some recycling pickups are in our neighborhoods, and that's a key that I think everybody, I, some, I thumbtack mine up in my garage to make sure I'm an adherence, adherence with it, and certainly, because I have to look at my neighbors' recycling bins to figure out which week they're picking us up. But also, I, I think it's important, and I think Counselor Anderson Burgos makes a good point about the numbers and what we can recycle, and if anybody wants to raise their hand to this question, I, I say, can you or can you not recycle a red solo cup?
You can't.
See, we can't even agree on that. I mean, we, we all need to be educated. There's a time where you couldn't, you can now, but there's a time when you couldn't. And the pizza boxes is, is, I always knew about the contamination of food, but at most times, they'd accepted certain things that even if there was some food contamination on it. The other, the other point too is, I forgot to mention, or I think everybody saw it, but about the budget stuff, is this contract, our current contract goes to the end of the fiscal year, so this would be an item in next year's budget. I agree that it should be talked about now, to Counselor Bartley's point, but it is an item, that's why the numbers are being given to us, that's going to have an impact from July first on.
Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, just, do we know what our percentage of recyc, what we attempted to recycle has been rejected? I mean, is it five percent that we send, that we get penalized for? Is it three percent?
He gave a percentage, and I, it's something, he did give us some numbers that night, I figured exactly what they were.
Were they substantial?
Contamination is fifteen percent by weight, that's...
Fifteen?
Yeah, one, one point three nine gives you the fifteen percent for contamination of hazardous waste.
We, we've been running about three point five, which, you know, I, I said earlier, it's, it's poor, but it's, it's not something that the MRF has been penalizing us or too too worried about, about this city, which is a good, I think, compliment to the, the education, you know, component of what the DPW used to do over the years. I don't know if they're still doing it, but I used to call him the recycling czar when he drove around his truck and gave you tickets and yelled at you. And I think the best education, you know, Counselor Bartley, and, you know, best education is tough love, is the drivers don't pick up something that's not recyclable.
So it's just, if I can, you know, again, I would, I would compliment the citizens of the city for doing as good a job as we've done, because, I mean, clearly, that's a, that's a pretty good percentage, even with the questions that we're asking, they've done a good job. And I would also encourage, and I, and I, you know, when I hear about paper, I know when I was in the cotton store industry, we did a ton of recycled papers, and I'm just, you know, I would hope that we are looking at, is there a market that we could send that to, rather than sending it for, where we're paying a fee, where somebody would actually pay us to take at least the paper product, if not some of the plastic. So, I mean, I think we've got to look at all these options. And the other thing that kind of is discouraging is that we have a five-year contract coming before us, I mean, I know I've only been on for a year, but I haven't heard anybody saying, "We got a problem coming up with recycling," and we, we, we need to be thinking ahead of times. And we're kind of reacting now to, okay, we're, we're going to start having to pay, so we got to figure out a better way. So we need to do these things ahead of, and we should be reviewing these things as we go along, so that if in fact there's a potential, the market is changing, we're trying to find options before we're at this stage. And I think there are options out there.
Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, to your point, Counselor Murphy, I hate to say that we're, we as a city council are in defensive mode a lot of times, but until a department head brings that to our attention, we don't know that's happening. So we have to maybe have better conversations, maybe the conversation starts not only with this, but with many other things, but, you know, you know, that's their full-time job, this is our part-time job.
No, I agree.
So, I mean, so having said that, I mean, what, what do you want us to do?
Well, I'm, I'm saying that to department heads, and what as you were saying, they, these things should be brought, the mayor, the department heads, these things should be brought ahead of time, so, look, we got, we got some potential issues coming up, and we aren't going to bring them to you when, when we have no choice. We're going to bring them to you and see if there are options. I mean, if you're running a business, you're not waiting till you have a, a crisis or, or a major change and then say, oh, I got to figure out another way. You're anticipating what the market is going to bear, and this is definitely a market-generated situation. So I would say to the department head, I'm assuming, being aware that this is what's happening, and that the potential is there, would be coming ahead of time rather than five or six months ahead of time.
Counselor Sullivan, then Counselor McGivern.
Yeah, I just want to speak a little bit in defense of the apartment, department head here, and, and in no way should anybody on the city council, or Room One, or any department head. This is Mass DEP, one hundred percent. Mass DEP was running the MRF for years and years and years, they're the ones that mandated this recycling, just like other things have been mandated, and just like other things have been taken away from us by the state after they mandated. They have now turned over the operation of this facility to a private, for-profit enterprise, for-profit, all right? So there you have it. As, once Mass DEP did that and put it out to bid, that's when our department heads become aware of it. And it happened in eastern of the state? Yes, it had not happened out here. It's happening not to Hoyoke, it's happening to seventy other communities as well, who are having to react under the same timeframe as the rest of us based on the actions of what was done in Springfield.
Counselor McGivern.
Just in fairness to our DPW superintendent, this is a seven-month warning as to what's going on, something that just took place with, the key factor is what happened in China. Counselor Sullivan makes a good point, but the key factor is what happened in China, because if China was still in the business and making money, and we were still in that revenue-sharing profit, you know, era, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about this, you know. But, but Mike came to us as soon as he, as he knew that this language was, as Michael, Mike, as Counselor Sullivan pointed out, is, is, and I agree, Counselor Bartley, you know, it's standard language, you know, it's negotiation is what we call it, but there's nothing to negotiate because you take it or you don't. And then this, this language came up, you know, with a, a carrot, you take it now, and there, there are some things that we're offering here. You don't take it now, it's only going to get worse. But the caveat is, we can get out at any time, and without being asked, our superintendent told us last week, the week before, that he will continue to look, the city will continue to look for other options that are more lucrative and better. And hopefully, some of those options aren't even out there yet, if we find the private sector starts to get back into recycling plastics, and it may, most of this may just go away. But it's a seven-month warning, and I do want to, I just want to say respectfully that, you know, I think that's, that's pretty good for our department heads, you know, when it came to us, seven months before the budget, seven months before this contract is, is our current contract is over.
Counsel, well, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just want to make a request. I, I didn't get the, that little abbreviated memo, Joe, or some, but, but may, maybe if I could address the newly-appointed admin assistant, if I could just get it emailed to me, if you have a copy, Ryan.
Ryan, there were copies left on the, you know, for everybody on the desk, in the back.
Send it to everyone.
Thanks, Ryan.
And Counsel Green.
Just quickly, this is, I don't know, when I read through this thing, it's a floating contract. As soon as the state decides to change the rules, the communities have to comply with whatever the rules they change, so this is going to be an ongoing process from now till eternity.
With that, there's no further discussion. Motion is to receive, adopt, allow the mayor to enter into a five-year extension, or a five-year contract. The court will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for that.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Hernandez? Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote of the body.
With your vote, you approve the five-year con, or not the five-year contract, but from building local, uh, local building inspector to pay assistant building commissioner. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
The finance committee met with Damian Cody, our building inspector, uh, last, a week before and discussed this proposal. What we, we currently have is a, a, um, assistant building commissioner who was supervising two of our newer positions who are actually making more money than the assistant building commissioner. A position that has not seen any type of a, uh, increase over the last 10 years. What the proposal here is, is to take the money from the local building commissioner, which, uh, and, and to transfer it into the pay assistant building commissioner, allowing the salary to get to about mid-range of grade 10. This would be enough to put, and make it, you know, more appropriate in terms of the people that he directly supervises, which I believe if anybody in the committee can help me, were the, uh, two of them were the, uh, the demolition, uh, positions that we created. And they, what, they, we, we did this early in the year for a similar type situation within the department. Um, we, we commended Mr. Cody for doing this within his own budget, for proposing it. This will take care of the, from now to the end of the fiscal year. The committee voted for the nothing to recommend that we, uh, make this change and to approve the transfer.
Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, I think, um, basically the long and the short of it was the person that this person is, uh, supervising over is a grade higher. So we're making this person a grade nine. Um, so it's kind of just doing housekeeping throughout the, uh, the department.
Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading?
He's just home watching it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Clerk will call the roll. If you vote, uh, yes, you're voting for the transfer.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy's abstaining. McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
I say yes.
11 yeas.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Uh, there was no public safety, public service, no DG and R, no charter and rules, and no joint committee onto orders.
Question on that, uh, Counsel President? Um, do you have a timeframe when you're gonna be picking chairs and picking committees? Um, just, we have some people that are looking to get, um, meetings going.
Yeah, good, good question. I forgot to have it circled for the president's report. Committee assignments, please, if you wanna sit down, we can, uh, talk, um, over the next few days. I'm gonna try and get it ready for Monday of next week. Um, if you just want to text your preferences. I know a few people have already approached me on what they were looking to do. Um, I take that all into consideration and then try and accommodate, uh, everybody. I'll be very clear, um, I'm making changes in the sense of myself personally. I've been on finance for 14 years. It's an honor. I truly, uh, love finance. You, you all know my background. I'm a boring tax attorney. However, I do believe it's time for other people, uh, to try. Maybe they might have gotten on it, uh, wanted to and I put myself back on it. I, I'm just gonna be a little fairer and offer up to someone else who might wanna be on finance. So we'll, we'll see where that goes. But you can either text me, email me, or if you wanna sit down and talk, I'm more than happy from now up, uh, until Sunday. And then Monday, I'm gonna try and get everything out as fast as possible. All right? With that, orders, motions, orders, resolutions, um, 12, Counsel McGivern, motion would be received.
The motion is to suspend the rules to pass the first reading this evening.
Motion to suspend rules, take it up. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just gonna make this a little bit longer than we usually do. This is a vote that we will probably take at every meeting we have over the next 12 months. But just, uh, for Counselor Hernandez and Counselor Graney, um, and everybody if they have a question. We have, uh, salary line items in each of the, of our big public safety departments, as we do every department budget, for firemen, policemen, and so forth. During the course of action, these individuals at any time could be injured on duty. Sometimes it happens over the weekend where a person is actually unavailable to work. Once that happens and if this injured, because it happened while they're working, they are going to be paid their salary while they figure out whether the injury is per, is, is temporary, um, something that is more long-range or something that, you know, could sometimes, God forbid, be permanent. But the transfer of the monies is an accounting that was set up by a former auditor, uh, Brian Smith. To be able to know when we look at the budget that the dollars in the line items at the end of the year, if it remains in the actual salaries, is salary dollars that were paid for service provided. If, if you look at the money that's being transferred out, it's still their salary, but it will come out from another line item known as injured on duty, which would be essentially the time that they are down for providing service, but still receiving their salary. So we, we do this, uh, since we adopted an ordinance about three years ago, not allowing department heads and the mayor to, uh, transfer any money within their budget without coming back to us, even though it's from personnel to pers, to personnel. We, um, we have to take this type of vote on a much more regular basis. Um, and tonight we, I recommend that we do adopt it this evening. I believe the council president can tell us on this particular item how many individuals it affects.
Five.
Aye.
All right, so motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy? All of yeas.
With your vote, you approve the transfer.
President, make a motion to suspend the rules to take up items, items 13 through 26 and to refer each of them to the committee on finance.
Motion to suspend rules, take up 13 to 26 as a package and refer to finance. Just as under the suspension rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 13 is in-state travel to vacation buyback, $929.19. 14 is a request from stabilization of $65,000 to legal claims. 15 is from stabilization, $25,000 to legal claims. 16 is from stabilization, uh, $6,000 for legal claims. 17 is stabilization, $75,000 for special counsel. 18 is from stabilization, $7,500 to extracurricular. 19 is stabilization, $6,000 to dues. 20 is stabilization, $85,550 to, uh, from stabilization to, uh, computer consulting. Stabilization is 21 of $12,535 to cybersecurity insurance. 22 is $50,000 from stabilization to special reserve fund. 23 is stabilization of $118,000 to, uh, school resource officers. 24 is from stabilization, $100,000 to streetlights. 25 is stabilization, $13,000 to telephone usage. 26 is for a, uh, East Hampton Savings Bank donation for park and recreation. So all those to finance, all those in, oh, Counsel Bartley, hold on.
Just under, does the finance chair wanna say anything?
Uh, there is no finance chair right now, but.
Well, you're holdover.
Well, I, I mean anticipating not being chair, but whoever is on the finance committee. The law department is, I think, looking to do some type of an executive session if we need one. Whether you, we wanna do this in finance, you know, the money will have to go into, transfer have to go into finance. Whether we wanna do it in finance or, or if you wanna do it as a full city council will be up to the other president itself. But it's been a while since we had an executive session on some of the, uh, legal issues facing the city. Note that we put $750,000 into stabilization and became kind of a free cash stabilization account. The auditor did, uh, text me today to note that one of the items that was in those supplemental budgets that we did not act on was, uh, money to fund the superior officer's contract. That dollar figure is being calculated. Um, I just reminded the, uh, the auditor that once you hit, if we hit, but once you hit $750,000, I'm guessing that the city council is all in. You know, barring any emergencies for the rest of the year. But other than that, I, I, you know, I think this is what we had asked for instead of a supplemental budget. We, we asked that we would do this, be able to do this line item by line item.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, right, so, uh, and I, I'm not gonna really be pedantic or speak to the new counselors or whatever, but I, I just wanna point out as a reminder that we voted previously on at budget time, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 24. And that's it, as far as I could tell. So I'm just gonna point those out. Those are all cut, uh, from, on June 26th. So I'm gonna point that out. Second of all, I'm gonna point out, and I'm hopeful, uh, you know, wherever the holder of a finance chair, uh, or whoever is the finance chair, has a finance meeting, I'll be there. But on number 23, um, we were told that this is a, funds that are gonna be from the public school department. So my question is, are we getting our 118 first or are we, are we getting it later? And then when it comes in, where's it gonna go? So that's a big question for me on, on how I vote for, for that one. I, um, I am amazed, Mr. President, that cuts we made to the mayor's office, again, are back before us. I am blown away by it. We made them in June. We did it again in December and we're gonna have to do it again in January. So this is three strikes and hopefully you're out at this point, Mr. President. I'm just, I'm blown away by it, the, the chutzpah. The, uh, other one, I just, I do wanna compliment Mr. Bloomberg and Tanya, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce her last name. I, Tanya W. Wodowicz, I think it is. And if I blew that, then I'm sorry. But I did email them over the week and they provided some, uh, intel to me. In particular in regard to the special, one, number 22, the special revenue fund. But we're gonna have to expand upon the special revenue fund, Mr. President. I hope that the mayor heard what, what my friend, uh, the at-large counselor said at budget time relative to number 24 about the streetlights. I doubt it, but we'll see what happens. I hope, Mr. President, that the mayor heard what we said regarding number 20 about wallet computer. I doubt it because I haven't had any, any feedback on that, but we'll see if we get feedback on it. And then on number 21, Mr. President, the cybersecurity, I would just, I would just note that that is a brand-new item, never before. That was not in the budget. That's a brand-new item that was thrown into one of the three supplemental budgets, or two or three supplemental budgets, or all of them, uh, last December. I will, I will note that that's from, uh, Dowd Insurance is, is a vendor on, on that one, obviously a reputable company. And that, that's not the issue. The, the issue is, you know, do we need it? Probably. Can we afford it? Probably not. So those are, uh, those are some of the very early question marks I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm certainly gonna wanna hear answers to. I mean, I guess the number one is, you know, the, the school resource officers. I mean, that's the biggest, that's a, that's the biggest ticket item on there as far as I can tell. The $118,000. I, I really wanna know is, is that, in fact, if we have to finance that, I mean, when, when can we be, expect to be reimbursed by the school department? I just think that's a vital question, Mr. President. And I don't know whether Dr. Reich is gonna have a moment to get back, back to us. I, I just, just for the newer count, the 14, 15, and 16, those are, I think, basic ones that we cut, uh, every year. And we just wanna hear what's going on. And I appreciate the holdover finance chair said we'll go into, uh, possibly executive session. I'm gonna just make one last note that on the, uh, on the cyber sec, cybersecurity one, there's a endorsement to that contract at the bottom of it, Mr. President, that is relative to Hoyoke Police Department and whether or not they've had cybersecurity issues. And I don't know if that's, that's something we should talk about in open session either, Mr. President. But it's, it's, it's on an endorsement. And so I just wanna, wanna hear a little bit more about that. So I want the president to be aware of it.
Just letting you know, there is a late file, correct, from legal. They did contact me on Friday, but it was just after the deadline, to ask for an executive session to give everyone an update as to what's going on. The recommendation was seeing how all these items are going to finance to be fully vetted, that at that same finance meeting, we can always move into executive session, get all the information, come back out and then act on or table or do whatever you want. But at least finance, when they have their meeting, can take up an executive session. That's the request on the late file. Counsel Graney.
Just quickly, what's the balance of the stabilization fund as of today?
Well, we added 750, I believe, and it was a little over 11 million. So adding, just call it almost $12 million, but we'll get the exact number for you.
What's the free cash number?
Uh, that was negative.
We know that's negative, how we?
But yeah, just to understand, uh, Mr. Mr. Graney, or Counsel Graney, sorry. Really what we did was we put the money in stabilization. That was the only way to put the money in a line item in order to then be able to look at it. Line item by line item. That's the only account that we could go to.
I was just wondering where that 750,000 came from. That's, that's.
It came from the, the budget when we finally got the certification of free cash and all our assessed values and everything else and new growth.
Okay.
It was, it was an op.
Counselor, hold on, it was Counselor Murphy, then Sullivan.
Yeah, I did, and again, I have the same concerns. I mean, we have 750,000 we put in. If all of these pass, we're basically about 75% of that at 563,000. We still have the supervisor, police supervisors' contract funding to come.
We, we have a lot of contracts that are on the table.
You know, I, I, we really need to make sure that we are fine-tuning these and being as, as conservative as we can so that we do have some money when we have some kind of emergency come up because more than likely we will.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, thank, just a reminder as we get into this to the rest of the council that back in June, we filed a request to the mayor to renegotiate the pilot agreement with Hoyoke Gas and Electric, back in June, six months ago. And that pilot is the same pilot they've had for 12 years. No response. But now let's put another 100,000 back in without having renegotiated the pilot. We also requested, now we want 75,000 for outside counsel. We requested that a 93A or a 122B, uh, which is unfair and deceptive insurance practices and business practices, 30-day notice be sent out on that. We were told, you know, we weren't gonna do it because we were very close to settlement on the case. We're in the final stage of negotiation. Now we learn, guess what? Didn't happen. We're going for summary judgment. Had we gone for this before going for summary judgment, we could be going after triple damages plus interest plus the legal fees. So let's keep this stuff in mind as we get into these discussions in committee also.
Counsel McGivern.
Counsel Graney's question on the, or 750,000 dollars, the actual free cash last year would have been about 1.7 million dollars. Uh, the DOR stepped in and we're gonna, I think we're gonna have some meetings about this in the near future and shored up what they said were some deficit line items within the budget that had been occurring over the last four or five years. These questions were asked last year. Counsel McGee had an order and we were told that most of those deficits were, were taken care of. It appears that not all of them or not enough of them were taken care of. There's a lot of questions, but the 750,000 dollars came from a lucrative, uh, uh, sales of single-family homes this year in the Pioneer Valley and in the city of Hoyoke. And the DOR agreed with the assessor's numbers to allow for an increase in values within the ceiling itself. And allowed for the mayor with the city council's permission to take advantage of that because of the, uh, the lack of free cash that was used for those deficit accounts.
Thank you. There's no further discussion. All those are going to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 27 from Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. Want to refer to the ordinance committee?
Motion is to go to ordinance, uh, order at the zoning on the, uh, west side of Main Street from the northeast side of Sergeant Street to the southern side of, uh, Hamilton Street be changed to Business Highway. Uh, from Business Highway to, uh, BC. So that, you said ordinance?
Yeah, ordinance.
Okay, so under discussion, Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, just, uh, this is a goal, and I'm trying to do this basically street by street. But I'm trying to get to the situation on Main Street where the vacant lots can start to be redeveloped. Right now, the way they're zoned, they are so confined in terms of what they can build that nobody is going to build. We, so we did a vacant lot with Nueva and, and there's nothing they can do right now. So it means that. I've talked to the people of the church. I've talked to the people in the furniture cor, and, and there's another vacant lot that's gonna happen probably in the next two weeks as another building comes down. So the goal here is that when we do have these vacant lots, we can go back to building to the street like we've done on Main Street all the way along. And there's other sections, but this is the first section, um, that I think gives us the best chance. And we, we have the software redevelopment taking place one half block down. So, uh, it's kinda tying all that in. So hopefully, uh, we can move the zone change and, and give an opportunity. So, hopefully, we can move the zone change and give an opportunity for some development to take place.
All right, so, to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-eight is a handicap sign for 300 Chestnut Street.
Ordinance. Twenty-nine and 30 as a package?
Take 29, 28 and 29?
A second.
As a package?
30 as well.
I'll get to 30 in a second. 28 and 29 as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
That's a good call.
So, handicap sign to 300 Chestnut, and then 550 South Summer to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty is at the, from Councilor Murphy, that the city council consider creating an ordinance to establish specific handicap signs to license plate numbers. We have been informed by the state that you cannot do that. That's illegal. We used to do that, and it was great. And then, I think it was like my second year on, the state came back with a very nasty gram and said, "Don't do it." You could approve a handicap sign for the person. That's why I don't read names, because it's for that area. But if I come along with my handicap sign, I can park there legally. You cannot designate it for one person. So, therefore, we had to go around the entire city and take off every number, because we used to do it. So, it's illegal statewide by the state. Councilor McGivern?
Which we all know, and the only funny thing, Mr. President, is why doesn't that apply to the zip cars?
We tried, but we've been ignored.
I know.
Joe, Joe.
So, with that, Councilor Murphy?
Joe.
Details.
I'll accept the motion that the order be withdrawn, but, I mean, again, the rationale for it, and I've had so many, I drove down three streets and a number of handicap signs there where the people who they were designated for are no longer even able to use them. And it's, in Hoyoke and Churchill, it's a major problem, just partly because of the congestion of apartment buildings. But also, and this was a request of about five or six different people that have handicap parking spots designated for them, but they're, in many cases, unable to use them, and then they're parking three or four or five car lots away, so. I mean, that was the concern. I said I would try to file something and see. You know, it seems to me like that, and with all due respect to the state, as much respect as I'll show them at this point, you know, that seems to be, I understand you don't want to favor somebody, but the goal here is to take care of people with a disability, so that they are protected. And, you know, I was certainly, I guess I'll respect the law, but it certainly seems to me to be non, a non-compassionate law to those people that are deprived.
Yeah, it impacted several when I was in Ward 6, but, and then we had to have the DPW go around and redo all the signs. So, motion is to give leave to withdraw to 30. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-one from Councilor Bartley, Councilor Lacy, McGivern, Murphy, and Bacon, that the city engineer provide recommendation to the ordinance committee for a minimum buffer for which vehicles can park near city crosswalks to, you said ordinance?
Please, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two from Councilor Bartley.
Finance, please.
Second.
It's gonna go to finance, that the city ought to provide more detailed information.
Yeah, just under discussion.
For finance committee regarding free cash, approximately 69 separate accounts. So, finance, a discussion, Councilor.
It's not that exciting, but it's just what Councilor McGivern was speaking about, I'm sorry, the holdover finance chair was speaking about a few minutes ago. So, this is, this is what we had before us, June 17th. And we had a, we had a sheet with a list of, you know, 16, well, 40 of them on the front page, and, you know, 30 more of them are there approximately on the back page. I did email the auditor. She's gonna be prepared for whenever the new finance committee gathers, when this is taken up. She'll be prepared to drill down into the 1.7 million dollars that Councilor McGivern referenced, so we can have a little better discussion. Thank you.
All right, so, Councilor McGivern?
Full support of this order, and I would hope that the finance committee, whoever the finance committee will be, Mr. President, would take up the emails that you, the one you received last year and the one we all received this year in terms of, for the Department of Revenue, and be able to look at, you know, the whole thing with the Department of Revenue in the actual meeting, and answering, you know, not just our auditor, but the DOR answering our questions, because I still think some of the moves were perhaps needed, but the city council was not involved with money that was used from this year for last year. The city council was not involved in spending certain monies, which scares me. If that can, even though it's at a period of time when the one budget ended and the second budget started, I still believe that we have, and I think even in the DOR and state statute, you know, simple finance laws, you know, the city council should have been informed about these decisions and actually taken our own votes on them.
So, to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-three is from Councilor Bartley, the city council takes final action.
Second.
Where? What'd you say?
Finance, right? Yeah, that one's finance. I just want to take a vote on this thing.
So, this is the city council's late follower B from May 7th, which is regarding the bond for the schools, the finance, all those in favor?
Well, just under discussion, I just want to, I mean, I simply just want to take a vote on it. I mean, I think, I think it's due, probably overdue, that we take a vote on this. So, it's in committee. I just want to get it, move it forward.
All right, so it's going to finance. Councilor McGivern?
We have to take a vote on it, because we have to clear all our orders out of the committees. The only reason we haven't taken this up so far is because we had to wait for the MSBA to do their final thing, which even though, obviously, our voters sent the message of we are not going to go out into a, an override for the purpose of paying for this project, the, you know, the money issues were still with the MSBA. You know, I didn't expect it, but it would have been nice if they had lifted the construction cap, and we wouldn't have needed an override, but that's a story that's gone over the dam. So, yes, we will take a vote on it and get back to the city council.
The metaphor.
So, to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The metaphor.
Thirty-four, that the DPW superintendent report to the city council regarding clearing sidewalks after a storm.
Yeah, second that, and I copied up, Mr. DPW.
So, motion is to public safety with a copy to Superintendent DPW?
Yeah, your order says what it says, so I just, I mean, these are public sidewalks, as of present. I mean, Crozier Field, for like five days after, it was all ice. And I strongly doubt that that was the only one. I'm sure Springdale Park. And, I mean, is, my simple ask is, who's assigned to snowplowing the public sidewalks? I mean, there's gotta be a plan, right? I mean, somebody, we got the equipment, we got the, I think we got the person power. And if we, if we don't, Mr. President, I mean, take a look, I mean, if you, well, it's a little late now, because it's melted, but just, I mean, if you walk past, you know, Yankee Peoples now, a week ago, that was, it was like there wasn't even a storm. And a block south is Crozier Field sidewalk, and it was, I mean, it was a skating rink on the sidewalk. What's the plan? I mean, we've had snowstorms before, I think. I mean, we should be able to get this organized. So, I'm not, I hope I'm not being mean, but, I mean, this is, this is a public safety matter, and it should be resolved.
Councilor Barbara Martinez?
I'd be honored, Gladys.
I actually called the Board of Health to try to address some of the business, because I did get several calls. Somebody fell right up the-
Gladys, use your microphone.
I'm sorry. I was just saying that, that I did receive several calls from constituents, one in particular who fell at the corner of Appleton and Maple, right by the McDonald's area. And I went by, even took pictures. I was sent to call Board of Health instead. So, I was unclear who's responsible cleaning the sidewalk, because in order to address that, it's supposed to be the business, or is it supposed to be DPW if it's a sidewalk?
We'll get the answers to it.
Okay.
So, 34 is to public safety with a copy to the superintendent.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yep.
If I may, to the new, to the public safety chair holdover as well, because I think you and I had a late file relative to the prior storm, about what a cluster bomb that was. So, now we've, now we're a little more seasoned as a snowplowing group, I hope. We gotta do a little bit better on the sidewalks, and, you know, and as I point out here, a couple streets were simple. I'm not saying they're thoroughfare to their dead ends, and we all know that, to live in Elmwood, but, I mean, they weren't even plowed. Not one, not one pass-through. I mean, come on.
I do believe with regards to our order, we did find out the answer through some of the people, but we'll get it in committee, is that they didn't hire outside contractors until the very, very end.
Well, I didn't get that intel, other than rumor mill.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. That's what I heard, but we'll get it in committee. We'll get the official answer. Councilor Martinez?
So, we're gonna find out who's responsible, if it's the businesses or the city that has to plow, right?
Business, city, and residents. There are ordinances as to if you have a house, you have the sidewalk in front of you, for so many.
Because the same thing happens in Stop &amp; Shop up by, in Ward 4. And what happens is that they don't plow the side where the crosswalk from the building across. There's a crosswalk there, so that's never, there's no entrance for the people when they cross, so then they still have to walk through the street.
There you go.
So, I'm trying to find out who's responsible, so we can hold them accountable.
So, we'll find that out from Mike, but Councilor Anderson Burgos?
I believe it falls under the business, because I used to work at the Lincoln Street Stop &amp; Shop, and it is the business that is responsible for removing that snow. I'm almost 100% sure.
Thank you.
Councilor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just as a bit of information, I did go through the Board of Health when there was a question as to ownership of an area of a sidewalk. And they were very helpful, because it wasn't clear. It ended up being a split issue, and so they addressed both owners, and they took care of a similar type of problem. So, the Board of Health can be helpful in that regard, too.
Mr. McGivern said tough love.
So, 34 to public safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-five is from Councilor Barbara Martinez, that a handicap sign be placed at 24 Hammond Street.
Ordinance, please.
Motion is to send to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is a late file. Late file A is from, now they put in my name. I don't do late files, just kidding, no. From Councilor McGee, that order that executive session be discussed with regards to the litigation and settlements. And like we said, we can take that up in the finance meeting, so motion be to send to finance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There are no other late files, and there are no others, so motion is to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.